We just have Mary for everything.
Mike sort of opened it up.
You can answer any questions, but the chair has it all down.
All right. Good evening. Welcome to the Select Board meeting, July first, two thousand and twenty five for the town administrator interviews. The first set of interviews. We're going to get started as we always do with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, tonight's interviews, the candidates will be coming in. They start at six P M. We have Mr. Ward, Michael Ward, and Anthony Sousa. For the integrity and for the fairness of all candidates. This is the only part that is being broadcasted. The actual interviews that kick off at six P M. Will not be broadcast neither tonight's nor tomorrow night. These will be available online through A V M I Thursday morning. The way that we are going to run the interviews tonight is there. There'll be, the question will be answered. The candidate will have time to answer the question, and then we'll move on to the next question. There'll be no follow up. There'll be no discussion after the candidate answers the question. It'll be immediately moved to the second question. And the chair will be asking the questions. That is it. There'll be no discussion afterwards. No, no room for comments. We're just going to move on to the next one. It just keeps the integrity and fairness and consistency throughout the entire process. And that is on the recommendation from the Collins Center, who we brought in, the entire board voted to bring in. The Collins Center, and that is on their recommendation.
Do we need to make a motion? Or no, we're just?
We don't. No.
Yep, okay.
No, we don't. We don't need a motion. No. So that's again, everything we're doing is on the recommendation of the Collins Center. So that's it. And I think.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just making sure that the interview is going to be one hour. They're going to be timed, correct?
So yes.
And it will have exactly the same amount of.
Everybody's gonna have the same amount of time. Are they going to be asked all this exact same questions? And they will be timed by Hillary. She will let us know when it's five minutes left. If. There is. I guess that's really it. Just, you know, five, five. They're gonna have an hour. And. And then tomorrow night, if there is. After the last interview, the board will have a chance, if we so decide, there's a chance for deliberation. And moving forward after that, if anything. Anyone stands out, or if the vote gets a general consensus.
Okay.
So just, just the. The, the process. Following Wednesday night. So Wednesday night, theoretically, the board could deliberate and select a candidate. And Mary should talk to, or speak to the process from that point forward. We do have a meeting scheduled for Monday night. And Mary, maybe you can talk about the, the fact that any, any, you know, recommendation is based on. The criminal background check as well as coming to successful negotiations with the candidate and how that process would proceed.
Sure, and we can do that when you are finished with the interviews. I mean, so it's very straightforward. It's going to be the will of the group. On how you proceed after the second interview. You've been smart to put the agenda that gives you the flexibility to take action. We find cream rises. I think, you know, people will know. Anything would be pending. While we've done references, we did not do the criminal credit and that check. That gets expensive for you. We don't have any concerns about any of the candidates in any of that area, but we like your vote to be pending successful background. And you do have Monday if you need to spill to next Monday on that. So we can see where we are and. Mister Chairman, you were talking about taking the temperature at the end of the interviews. Not discussing it beforehand, and then we'll see and go from there.
No, definitely. And Mary, I want to thank you and your group. I think we've got some pretty good candidates. And I don't see anybody here. I want to thank our town administrative search committee as well. They did a great job.
They did.
We have four outstanding candidates, and I'm looking forward to moving on.
We do have a meeting scheduled for Monday. Originally, that, no matter what, I would keep that meeting. And we'll post it as executive session, put an executive session item in there so that the board can meet to discuss amongst yourselves. What you think a reasonable offer should be, because obviously following that, you'll have the candidate or that you've chosen come in and meet in the executive session, negotiate with them. So naturally, as a group, you should have the opportunity to discuss.
Right.
Where you want to go with that.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I'm going to just pause the recording right now.
Yeah, you want to just record it, all right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Pour your water.
Okay, great.
This is Mr. Ward. I'll let him introduce himself.
Hello, yes, Michael Ward from Clinton.
Hi, Don Martinez.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, nice to meet you, Mano de Bashe.
Thank you.
Hi, Mike. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
Yes, I am.
Have a seat right there.
Mr. Ward, welcome.
Thank you very much.
So I'm, I'm going to explain the process to you. And then I'm going to open it up. I'm going to ask you a question. You're going to answer the question. Move on to the next question. There'll be no follow up. There'll be no discussion. Answer the question. I'm going to move to the next question, and you will have one hour. When there is five minutes left. Hillary's going to let us know. And. Move on to there.
Good, thank you.
You're right. So, Mr. Ward, tell us about yourself, your professional experience, and why you were interested in becoming Bellingham's Town Administrator. This is your opportunity to sell yourself. But take as much time as you need.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to come here tonight. My name is Michael Ward, been town administrator for thirty plus years, thirty point five years, all in Clinton. And I really appreciate the opportunity to come in tonight. I was telling the screening committee. They were only my second professional interview that I ever had, so now this is my third, so I'm racking it up here, definitely. Going from here. So throughout my working career, I had a interview for my current job that I'm in. And that's the only interview I've ever had in my, in my, in my lifetime. So. So going through this, I hope we have some patience and appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. So I started after college, started my career at the State House over there six years. Loved it. Got to learn the political process, learn a lot about the state, how things work. And I went to school for public administration. So a position had opened up at Clinton, and they. I had been approached and asked if I'd be interested to apply. So I had applied. And fortunate enough to get the job. I only did eighteen month contract because I was looking at that point. Kind of to see what my, where my career was going. And they were in transition, so I said I would come in for eighteen months, help kind of do what I could to kind of set things straight. And that went by so fast that they asked if I'd stay another three years. And then that became another three years and another three years. So it's been a wonderful labor of love, a wonderful opportunity there. And now I'm at a point in my career, after thirty years, saying. Am I going to, my contract was coming up this year. Do I stay? And, you know, work, continue working here, or do I see what else is out there? I'm hoping, and my plan is to probably try to work another ten years before I look to retire. And I was hoping to see kind of what else might be out there for me, what another opportunity might be out there for me. So. So I announced to the board that I wasn't going to my contract. There are, you know, a lot of changes going on in our community with our board, changes in board, changes in the organization. So I thought it may be a good time to kind of look, look elsewhere. My contract date was yesterday, which my date was up. They're still going through the process, they're not as far along as you are, so they've asked if I could stay on through that process. So. They expect, you know, maybe sixty to ninety days, but this is, they may end up being like Dennis Frain and. And the extent beyond that, but at this point, I'm still in Clinton. And, and been helping the best I can with their transition as I'm looking to see what else is up there for me as well, too. So. So that's pretty much my professional career. I'm married. I have two children. I have a son, twenty-three-year-old, who graduated from Stonehill College last year. He is now currently going through a tough time as the, a trainee at the Massachusetts State Police Academy right now. So. We see him only on the weekends and try to give him his pep talks to keep him going, and he's, he's doing well and. He's working hard, but it's tough. And I have a daughter who's still in college. She's in her third year. She'll be starting her fourth year at University of Virginia. She's looking at going into kind of a lot track, but her mom and her grandmother were teachers and. I started to see kind of a little in her eye that she might be going that, that route as well, too. She. She works at a school at college, and this summer she's working at a school as well, too. So. So it's good for her, it's a great opportunity, and my family is really kind of the center of my life, and they've been. Supporting me for all these years to do what I'm doing. I see my job as a vocation, and I, you know. My, my average day is ten hours, but usually more than that. Weekends, if I, you know, have the opportunity to represent the town, community or elsewhere, at weekends and nights. I go to a lot of board meetings at night as well, too, and they've been great and supportive, patient. And I owe them everything for that. So. So that's who, who I am, and looking to see if Bellingham would be a good fit. I'd see this as a similar town to Clinton, where I can bring a lot of my experience to this position and, and help. Similar type communities, I think. But then there's also the challenges professionally that I can gain from it as well, too, with the. The little bit of a larger population, my little bit larger budget, definitely larger land size and, and mass of, than we, we are. You have a, a highway interstate, which I'm sure presents a lot of different challenges and opportunities there. We always said in Clinton. If we could only just get a highway next to us, we'd be, we'd be, we'd be golden, and we were always just that kind of a community away. And then also your border town, never, you know, kind of say there must be some issues there with being on the border of a state border. So. So I think there's a lot, a lot of things that I can bring to the job, a lot of things I can learn from the job, learn your community. I do know Bellingham. I have some dear friends of mine from college that live here and come visit them often. As I say, with my, with my son and the Cape, you know, did a lot of traveling on, on the four ninety-five corridor, so I stopped in for commerce. I've been, you know, stopping into Mass, the church here and, and different, different things where I, where Bellingham has. Definitely been a town that I know and I'm, and I'm familiar with, certainly not intimate with. There's a lot, a lot that I, you know, get to know, but. But it's a town that I know, and at this point in my career, I can kind of look to see where it might work for me, where, you know, where I can help, but then that town. It, it can bring something to that town, but then that town can also bring something for me as well, too. So. Thank you.
Yeah. Bellingham has seen tremendous new growth over the past decade, but FY twenty-seven looks to be a potentially. Lead, lean year with regard to new growth. Additionally, we are seeing increased costs in the area of health insurance and with our retirement assessment. How would you prepare your FY twenty-seven budget, given these details?
I think I'd have to really delve into all of those issues and work with all the departments and the policymakers to. Kind of see what the lay of the land is. I know your budget, your finances are in pretty good shape. I know reading your, your, your audit. Things are, you know, they look good, and I like the format of the, the firm that you use, and that gave a lot of information. So. Things look to be in pretty good shape there, but we're all facing those same challenges. Our health insurance, we were in a consortium last year that dissolved. We then had to go on our own and picked up Blue Cross Blue Shield. And we ended up having a twenty-four point six percent increase this year in our budget. So that was huge. And we then had to kind of work with all of the, the, the unions and the employees and the policymakers and kind of just let people know. This is, this is where things are headed. Here are the numbers, being upfront and open with where things are at. And then we all need to kind of sit down and work together in order to come up with solutions, you know, and the way that. My personality, my style has always been very collaborative in working with people. I think that's one of my biggest strengths is. Is developing relationships and being able to talk with people and be open. That's why it's important for me to. Really establish my first. Direction, who's with the board, so that we're all working together, but then to have relationships with every department and every department so that they can feel comfortable coming to me. And then, thirdly, to be able to be open to the community, so that people know who I am, people can feel welcome coming in and knowing that they can bring their concerns to me. So. We're, we're all facing that, that same, same challenges, and I said that last year. We, coming out of COVID, we ended up being in a pretty good financial position because of a lot of the money that was out there and the spending that wasn't happening. So we're in pretty good shape in Clinton right now. But last year, I said. We were able to kind of make up a lot on capital and equipment expenditures, but I said to the, to the finance committee in the Select Board last year. We need to kind of be aware that I, I can feel that the next couple of years, we're going to start to slow down, so we have to be prepared for that. So this year's budget, we did pull back a little and try to be a little bit more conservative so that we could prepare for that next year budget coming around as well, too.
The town has a few controversial projects proposed, which include a sixteen-hundred unit development. On a local country club as well as a four hundred megawatt battery storage facility. These projects would generate much-needed tax revenue. That may be seen as unpopular developments. How do you work to balance the needs of the whole community as it relates to these developments?
Again, it's, it's, it's really kind of making sure that all the stakeholders are aware of it, the community's aware of it, the board's aware of what's happening. The best I can do is highlight the issues and what the needs are and what the impacts will be on those type of developments. I always said, you know, as town administrator, that. Now, Mike Ward shouldn't be the king of the community, that it's not just my decision, it's not me just telling people what it should be. I'll have my recommendation. I have my experience. I can give you my input, my direction, but it really needs to be collective decision. So. I think it's to bring people together and make sure everyone is aware of what these projects are. And, and the biggest thing is, you know, is the, the, the revenue is, is good and, and would, you know, love to have more revenue. But you have to see whether it's going to impact the character of the community, if this is what people are looking for, and also to see. What additional resources are going to be needed on the community to support those developments as well, too. So you might bring in more money. But what, does it cost to hire more public safety? Does it cost more to the school system? Does it cost more to repair roads if you have truck traffic? And it, it does a cost more to, to manage that traffic of, of, of more vehicles that are coming into town? So that's where, you know, I can be a help to give you that information and that input to kind of help the policymakers make those decisions. And the townspeople, if it goes to town meeting.
The town has a longstanding need to create additional senior housing. We will be working with a consultant to evaluate properties in town to meet these needs. What professional experience do you have that would be, that would help this project?
Well, I, I mean, it, it, the biggest thing that I have is just developing a collaboration with the Housing Authority and the Director. We do speak frequently, and we were looking at, at some town sites in Clinton for housing development. And we do have a fortune to have an economic development director. So with economic development and the Housing Authority Director. Trying to see how we can assess the environment for private development or what's out there for funding to try to bring in. Federal and state grants as well, too. So we've been kind of had a little, kind of a working behind-the-scenes working community to see what options were available out there. The past year, we did get invited into the library construction grant program, and now the library has taken that site as a potential new, new build. So we're, we're, we're looking at, at reno of the existing or new, and that, that, that's what they wanted to kind of hold on that. So. So we're done moving forward on any specific proposal, but it is something we've been studying.
Bellingham will soon be conducting a PFAS treatment plant with an estimated cost of thirty-six million. What financing strategy would you explore to ease the financial impact?
Well, the biggest thing that we ended up doing when we had to build a water treatment plant is we use the state revolving fund, so S R F. Funds as well is there to see if that would qualify. So I guess it's really. That, that would be. One avenue to see if there are any other infrastructure grants out there that we can try to, try to look towards, but. That's a big, big project for thirty-six million. This is, is a lot. Our filtration plant was a while back, but it was thirteen. So. We were involved in a PFAS. Class action suit right now, and we've got some funding on that, but it wouldn't be anything that would be to the substance to, to put towards a project, but. It's really kind of looking to see if there is anything that could qualify up there, and, and again, I've been fortunate to have an economic development director who was able to. Research and, and look at those grants, and we speak daily, so he could then bring me that information so we could develop a strategy. So. We would see what's out there for that and then have to look at, you know, how the funding would be, whether it's. Again, I'm not as familiar. I have to look into whether it's a. Repair or would have to be a general, a general fund. Expenditure.
What do you have? What experience do you have with working projects through the T I P? Transition Improvement Program. Do you have experience with Mass Works Grant Program? What other grant programs have you worked on?
Yeah, I, I, yes, I do. We do. We have a current tip program going on right now. So I'm very familiar with that. We just ended up having the state provide their comments and, and. Added a huge increase to our redesign, so we've been redesigned with that right now. But we've done, this is our third major, probably the last ten years, our third major tip project that we've done. And it was a major improvement. So we've done the three corridors. And it was total road reconstruction, sidewalks, utilities, and it was, it was fantastic. So, so we've done a lot with, with tip. Mass Works, we're applying for Mass Works right now, but we've done one Mass Works in the past. We're a COVID project. We're doing a, a Mass Works. Application right now for another project that we have. Trying to think of some of the other. Type. Grants, programs, and they pretty much most programs that are out there, we've, we've, we've applied for, we've gotten funding for. The demographics of our community have been very favorable to get to see federal funding, so. My rookie at having a grants officer feels good. Beneficial to us to have that. So. But anything that we do, even through economic development, does all flow through my office and the Select Board as well, too.
The town, town administrator negotiates five likely bargaining agreements. Tell us about your experience in this area, as well as how you prepare for and engage in negotiations. What would your negotiation team look like?
We, I negotiate five contracts in Clinton as well, too. We have our public safety, police, fire. We have a dispatch. Union as well as facilities and public work. So we have five in Clinton as well, too. We do do a combined house, school, facilities department, so, so it covers the schools as well, too. So I, I've been my whole career and my thirty years, I've been chief negotiator. We have had in recent past, our Labor Council has been coming to sessions as well, too. Like I said, most of my clarity without Labor Council, we have Labor Council now. So right now, the self. Labor Council, the department head of that union, whoever runs that, 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 we, unit and human resources. So those are the ones that we, we have, and now we're at the table, and everybody will help to. Do research that we need, whatever we're doing, come, so you have discussions about where we need to go. That's the team we put together. Also, on the school side, they have three unions on the school side, and I work closely with the superintendent, and. We've aligned the contracts a couple of contract cycles ago, so that all eight are up at the same time. So that, but we could, I work with superintendent, talk about financing, about, you know, what ability that we have for, for, for funding. And, and to make sure we try to get ourselves at least. Kind of familiar with what, what each side is doing. You know, we certainly, everyone has separate issues that they, they have to negotiate with every union. But we, we all try to be collaborative and make sure that we are, we're working what's best interest of the town, and. And then it helps also to. To kind of keep the pattern consistent, so, so that. All the employees here, you know, that everyone's being treated fairly, so not having. A one unit that may get a raise, and then another unit getting a different raise or more or less or, or whatnot. To make sure that, you know, everyone is treated the same.
Would a department head in the municipality. You currently manage or previously manage, describe your strengths as well as areas for growth.
Okay. Yeah, I think the biggest strength is being available for them and being supportive and being there to work with them, to work closely with them. I, I. Absolutely give them the ability to run the department, manage the department, keep me up to date. But whenever you run into a, a crossroads or a question or an issue, or you need help. I'm there for you. I told, told town department heads, you know, don't just wait to schedule a meeting with me or, or, or wait to, you know, hear back from me. If you need something, come up to my office, give me a call upon the phone, you know, or intercom, or come up to my office, and I'll drop what I'm doing to help you out, because I know. You know, I may have ten things on my list. That's another one on their list. So if they come to me, they express the importance, and they need my time, I make myself available. So. I think. The biggest strength that I think department heads, I would hope, would say is, is being supportive, being there with the knowledge and the experience to help them. In times when, when they have a question or when, when they need, need help. And the. I think the weakness would probably be, I guess. You know, trying to. Ensure that I work towards getting them their timely answer. If, if it's just a, a meeting that we can have and a question that I can give them direction, that I can give them the answer from my experience. That's, that's easy. But if it's something that needs to be researched, or it's going to be, you know, something that's going to be put out in, in writing, or it's going to become a formal policy. That's where I want to do my homework, and I want to make sure that what I'm putting out is correct. And we're not just rushing to make a decision or judgment and then have to backtrack before, or we do it down, down the road. So I do take time to make sure things are done thoroughly, and I know sometimes departments, if they have a law on their plate, they just want to kind of. Make the decision or, or just go, or, you know, I had a, a department head today and said. Oh, here's an amendment to a contract, and while you're, while you're here, can you just sign it and we can move forward with it? And I said, I'd be happy to, but A, I'd like to read it, and B, some of the, during the budget process, the Select Board and Finance Committee. I had expressed some concern about maybe staying with that, seeing consultants. So I says, I'd like to kind of get. So I says, I'd like to kind of get some feedback from the boards. And they said, okay, no, I understand. So so I then have to make sure that, you know, I I. Give that adieu to follow up as quickly as they need it, you know, compared to as quickly as, you know, I I. You know that I have the opportunity.
How do you? How do you remain apolitical in a political environment?
I think that's very important. I think it's for me, I've been. London is a very political town, which I think is great. I think it's it's a very active town. And it's a town where if you go, politicians knock on people's door, they welcome you to go and do door to door and say hello and want to meet you and want to know you. And and people do come out to vote, they come up for town meeting and and they watch, they watch what their town government does. So I think for me, it's important to treat everyone the same, to be respectful to everyone. At the end of the day, you know, I take direction from the majority of my board and that's what I have to implement. But I have. You know, it's it. It pains me if I don't have relationship with every board member where they feel they can come to me and ask me questions, get information. And I don't want to be in a situation, Mary Kinney, I'm talking to this one and not that one. The same with anyone in the community as well too. That, you know, people are going to have differing views, but if you have a question or you need information, that's what I'm here for. I'm not here to teach science or tell you that like this or that. I'm here to provide you the information. So that you can make your own decision or do what you may. We're very little that we have that. Shouldn't or can't be shared with people. So I think my my position is to always. Be open and treat treat people fairly as I would want to be treated and that I feel like. You know, able to get people support by doing that. And and again, I've been as long as I've been in a political community by having that. And developing relationships and people feeling they can come to me and, you know, trust that. Try to give them the right information just as we can. You know, I can't give them private confidential information, but anything I'm able to share with them, I will, no matter. What you feel, what you believe, what your views are, if it's, if it's just. The facts, that's my job is to get that information out.
How will you keep the select board informed?
I I think it's it's however, the, you know, I would love to meet with the board and ask how you would like to 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 get communication. You know, I've been through twenty five different board members over my thirty years. And there are a lot of different approaches that people have to the job. Some people would really like to know everything that's going on. So when they're approached with the community, they have an answer. Other people just say, hey, yeah, tell us when we whatever, you know, when you need to. And if there's somebody approaching me in the community, I'll take the information and bring it back to you. So I guess it's really as to how the board would like to get information. I, again, I'm on the twenty four seven. So whether you need, you know, like an email or text or or even phone calls. I and again, it's it's we would see how the the dynamic of your board would be. But generally, I've worked through the chair. So in between meetings, my initial contact is through the chair. At that point, would determine if it's if it's something that goes out to the rest of the board members. Or if it's something the chair would handle, or if it's something that the board, the chair would like me to disseminate to the board. That's kind of been my. My standard that I've used, but different boards have had different needs and wants for information. So I adapt to whatever board, whatever board wants. So I can keep you up to date as you want. Or as, you know, as high level as you want or or day to day, you know. Not obviously, yeah, every second of the day, but but major day to day stuff that I can keep you as informed as you wish. So again, for me, sharing the information is better because I'd rather it be out there, that people know about it, that people have the information. And you're not surprised or you're not then kind of second guessing the organization for us saying, well, why did you do that? Now, well, because of this system, this well, okay, but you kind of could have put the information out there and then it would have been known instead of. You know, kind of after the decision is made, kind of then, you know, having to set to question why that decision was made. Should we should be upfront with each other?
What have you learned about Bellingham that concerns you and why? How will you? How will you approach addressing your concerns?
That concerns me. Now, I think it's. I I think from what I know of it, and it's a wonderful community and the little research that I've been doing, I think they're really heading in in good direction. And the the board and working with Dennis have done a great job. So. I mean, there's, there's challenges, I think, like you said, with your development challenges by having an interstate, you know. For me, it's just learning your community and learning what your issues are. So it's nothing that I'm concerned about coming to the community. It's more getting to know your community. Because I do want to know your community. I want to know it intimately. I want people in the community to know me. And, you know, whether it's being invited to any any organization to to speak. I love going out if people invite me, but I also like going things too, just on my own, just to get to know the community, get to know people. And to be able to 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 go through the community and have people recognize me or say, say hello or come up to me. That's where I feel that I'm most comfortable is being able to, you know, you live in the same community, if you're your family, sometimes it's hard. You can never make through the the grocery store there at the checkout line in every aisle too. My wife was always tolerant until it got to be church. And she said, you're there, we never see you. You're there sixty hours a week at that office and you're getting stopped on your way leaving mass. She said, you know, can't they have them come to the town hall? So so but for me, that's what. Really kind of motivates me, sparks me that people feel comfortable to come to me, to talk with me, to ask me those questions. And that's what I hope that challenge that I can become that person here in Bellingham as well too, that I've done in Clinton.
Describe your skills and abilities in community relations. Give examples and discuss how community relations impact your work.
I think just as I just mentioned here, I think it's really. Just being part of the community, going out, I I speak at many groups, I speak at schools. I do often commerce in in the community, I walk in the community. So it's it's really being in the community so that they see who I am and then they can approach me for what their needs will be. We don't have, like in Clinton, we don't have, and in a city where we don't have like neighborhood groups or anything like that. But if there was something you had, you know, Bellingham, that's again where where I would shine. And I would really love to approach any group that that needs something from me that they feel that they think the town government can help them. Or they need information, or they want to know more about what we do or who we are. So it's really kind of just make yourself known in the community to develop those relationships.
Tell us about community events you have led or been a part of. What was your role and what was your role on the day of the event?
Different things again. Just being part of any major, major event that we do. We have a an old home day event. I was on that committee for years. It was a two day event just with crafters and entertainment. And we have about ten thousand people come through over the course of Friday night and Saturday. So I was on the committee and then the day of I would work the boots, not the boots, but work as going around to help people in boots. Or or help any of the volunteers if they need help, anything from the town hall. That because it's right in front of the Central Park is in front of the town hall, to help to make sure that they have the resources that they need. We have a Memorial Day parade that we run every year. I've helped, we had a committee that for three years that would would kind of volunteer committee that would run everything. And just before COVID and unfortunately with the, you know, there were a lot of the World War Two and Korean veterans that were running it. They had passed away, so I stepped in with that veteran officer and and helped coordinate that for the last several years. This year, they ended up getting a new committee. So we got kind of some new community members that got involved. But I was on the planning committee for that. The day of I did the lining up of the of all the groups. For the parade and then I would go kind of spot to spot where they stopped so that when they broke up, we could get the back of the line up again. Some of the other, the events that we do, we do a. A cleanup day in Clinton every every spring around Earth Day, where we go picking up trash. And I've done my number of years of my going along the side of the road with my trash bag and 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 my stick. And picking up, you know, two or three bags of trash there. And so anything on that, you know, in that respect that I can do, I I coach youth sports for years. That which isn't a town function, but I've done I youth, a basketball and youth. Football. So it's just kind of part of of who I am to do whatever I can to to help out. And whether it's my kids or the community or any major event, I'm either usually part of or or I'm there as as part of it. So but sports is a big, big thing and in my life as well and my family's. That's how I've been part of Bellingham as well too. I used to be a football, a high school football referee official. And I did a lot of work in the Tri Valley, doing county and Tri Valley leagues. So I I was here at the Bellingham High School and the whole one oh nine stretch doing, doing football officiating there too. So so I have gotten to know this area quite a bit. So.
All right. Lastly, please take a moment to offer any closing remarks.
Well, again, I want to thank you and giving you this time. I know it's it's quite a process you have to go through and it's a lot of time you put in. I always say that's why I have more respect for the select board members because I did it. I before I got into this job, when I was working at the State House, I was on a select board for three years. And I couldn't wait till the election came up. So I could, I could have somebody else take over because it's a huge responsibility. You feel the weight of those decisions that you have to make and the people in the community that are that are 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 relying on you. So by having that experience, I think I can help support you in the job you have to do. Because I know firsthand what you go through and the demands that you have. And my job is whatever I can do to make it easier for you to help better the town. So I I feel that the experience and the energy that I bring and find community that I put into the to the town. This is a type of community similar to where I'm in Clinton right now, that I think would benefit from that, but would like that type of style. And I love the opportunity to give a show.
Thank you very much.
Very nice to meet you.
Thank you. It's been absolutely. And I wish you good luck on your search. I've been saying I've been very impressed with this process. Like Colin said, it's incredible. Your search community was so welcoming. And I just kind of felt that all messes this board has been too. I, yeah, I don't feel nervous, you know. Feel like I can just talk and kind of tell you who I am. And and that's, that's I think what it's all about. So whatever you feel is the right fit. But I thank you for having that process and I wish you whatever best luck for your town and for your board as to where you go from here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
We will take a recess until. Five minutes up?
Yeah.
So five minutes up.
All right, everybody. This is Mr. Sousa. Yeah, I didn't call him Tony.
Don Martinez.
Hi, motivation. Nice to meet you.
Let's see it this way.
Yeah.
You can sneak through.
My gosh, pleasure, pleasure. For this concept for you. That's I just.
All right, Mr. Sousa.
Yes, sir.
Happen is is I am going to ask you a question. You are going to respond. There will be no follow up, no discussion. I'll move into the next question.
Okay.
You will have one hour. If they answer all all the questions, we'll get as far as we can get. When there's about five minutes left, everybody will let us know. And we'll wrap that question up. I will go down to the last question and. Wonderful, wonderful. So to begin, tell us about yourself, your professional experience and why you are interested in becoming Bellingham's Town Administrator. This is your opportunity to sell yourself. So take as much time as you need.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And it is a a pleasure and honor to be here. And I have to say too, a special thanks to the screening committee and the entire team for all of their hard work. Sincerely, I I mean that. I've never been in their shoes in a screening committee for the town administrator or town manager. But I have had the chance a couple of times for other key positions in in the past. And I appreciate and respect all the hard work that they put in. Now, a little bit about me and and please just welcome to call me Tony. That is my my legal name. Even when I'm in trouble. So it's it's fine to call me Tony. So so why Bellingham and also a little bit about me. There is so much good that is that is going on here in the community. And I will say this, in my past, I've worked in the city of Wilbur, in the city of Everett. The town of Oxford, as you know, most currently as the Assistant Town Manager for the last three years. And. In each community, you know, I've had to adapt, understand, learn stakeholders, listen carefully and lead. And through my experiences and through my my tenure, I've seen things a couple of different times, a couple of different ways. Again, a couple of different settings. And Bellingham has presented itself as a community that cares very much about where it wants to go. You're struggling with things that the other communities where I worked in struggled as well. Housing needs, economic development, finding that right balance, try not to lose your identity. Limited resources, funding, and how to make that work, how to do more with less. And Bellingham has enjoyed a very stable leadership as previous as a current town administrator. And I admire and respect that very much. And so I see Bellingham as truly a a great opportunity and something I love about this community too. A dedicated group of folks throughout have come to learn them and and also here too as well. And so that's why I applied. That's why I'm I'm truly, truly interested in this great opportunity. And I thank you.
Bellingham has seen tremendous new growth over the past decade. But FY twenty seven looks to be a potentially lean year with regard to new growth. Additionally, we are seeing increased costs in the area of health insurance and with our retirement assessment. How would you prepare for the FY twenty seven budget process given these details?
Sure. So I would prepare very similar to to my experiences in the past and to be candid, I'm part of the finance team in the town of Oxford. And each year we look at our revenues, our projections early on. Late summer, early fall, understand, you know, where we are with with free cash. Understand where we are with with the tax rate and what what lies ahead with respect to our liabilities, our capital needs and so on. And understanding that new growth is going to fluctuate. But in the immediate. Circumstances, so for FY twenty six, I want to take with the finance team here, very close, hard look, as you always do, same fundamentals. But to ensure that. We have decent, solid conservative numbers in the new growth, but also to unravel a little bit about the healthcare costs. You know, I I know you folks are self funded and are working through your your projections for the upcoming year. And so like Oxford too, we've had to grapple with that. Um we've had to grapple with that. Overall, though, it's not just new growth and healthcare costs, but it's the entire picture of um of the budget. And that is, you know, what are we doing with respect to seeking opportunities for for grants, for example? Um what are we doing with respect to potential maybe earmarks, legislative earmarks, which you folks have had the benefit of of securing? Thanks to to your leadership here um in the in the representatives as well. And so it's it's a comprehensive look, um and what drives this is. Looking at all aspects, not just your healthcare costs and new growth. Yeah, I think you have to look at it conservatively, new growth and healthcare costs, you need to. Work very closely with your healthcare advisors, um talked a little bit about that that self self-funded insurance. It's a difficult time um in the industry and um try to fine tune those numbers as best you can, but continue to go at it. What do I mean by that? To look at even at a monthly basis to see where you are with revenues and expenditures throughout. Um that is a conservative, I believe, a safe approach and a solid approach that's at least it's worked in the past. Um and I've seen firsthand um in in Oxford.
The town has a few controversial projects proposed, which include a sixteen hundred unit development on a local country club. As well as a four hundred megawatt battery storage project. These projects would generate much needed tax revenue, but may may be seen as unpopular developments. How do you work to balance the needs of the whole community as it relates to those developments?
I'm a little familiar with the um large housing project uh here in town. Um little less familiar with respect to the battery storage, but interestingly, um and thankfully I've had the experience of of working in in both sides of. Of the development piece and also as it relates to battery storage ironically too um. In Oxford, um also a growing demand for such facilities and finding the balance. At the end of the day, you know, there you have a master plan in town and you have a housing production plan in place too. And it's looking at what are the goals and objectives that are in those planning documents and you've adopt you've um passed an overlay. And within that, there's some important mechanisms, safeguards in place. Um to help ensure that whatever may happen, whatever may transpire with that. Large scale housing project, that you have the tools and the mechanisms to help shape. You know, prove with conditions or or deny, but I want to also make sure that your boards and commissions and your staff. Um continue to have the resources and the training and all the tools available and mechanisms available to help them. To help guide them in their decision-making process with respect to that. Battery storage. And it's ironic that that you again that you bring that up, um Oxford starts to see some proposals too for for battery storage. And we worked on, I drafted a a bylaw in place to help regulate that as well. It is important to find the balance in any proposal, in any project, whether it's housing, whether it's a warehouse. Um or again, in this case, the battery storage and ensure that again you have those safeguards in place. To allow your respected boards, your planning board, your ZBA, your conservation commission to put those conditions. Put those safeguards in place and to ensure that if there is a desire to approve project, that the boards have the ability to to fine tune. And to get what the community truly wants out of those projects, you can ensure again that your goals, your there is noble goals to. To create more housing, senior housing and so on, but to do it right, to right size. And in my past experience as town planner in Oxford, as community development director, planner in Everett and and Wilburn. I've I've worked in all different facets and um whether it's affordable housing, whether it's senior housing, first time home buyers, ADUs, right? Uh I know you folks just passed an ADU um bylaw in place this last May. Um there are a ton of tools and techniques and strategies available and I want to make sure again that our team. And our respective boards have those available and I also want to ensure that no matter what project it is today now in the future. That uh developers, property owners, butters and all stakeholders are insured a fair process. And that is paramount regardless whatever the um you know, the political forces may be and whatnot or pressures may be. I want to ensure that there is a fair process and that we're consistently following, not a state law, but following your bylaws. And I've done that before and I would offer the same um to the team here as well.
The town has a longstanding need to create additional senior housing. We will be working with a consultant to evaluate properties in town to meet these needs. What professional experience do you have, do you do you have that would help with this project?
So, I love the question, I do, um and look in every community I've been, uh Wilburn, Everett. Oxford, working on HPP's housing production plans, um the the need for senior housing is there, it's real. And um I've very familiar, very comfortable working with staff and consultants. And looking at those assessments, looking to to see where those opportunities are for senior housing and workforce housing and and all other types. Um yeah, I know, I know, it's a a critical goal in this community. Um some past experiences include in the city of Everett, um a project that I'm very proud of. Um the Saint Therese project, which is a renovation, pardon me, not a renovation, but a complete redevelopment. Of um old Catholic church into affordable senior housing and also included a healthcare center at the ground level. It's that type of project and others too, across the street, the old Pope John High School. Um the uh the city council in in direction with the mayor through my office. Wire that from the the diocese, also to advance for senior housing and veterans housing. I'm very proud of those two projects, um but how I would apply that here. Building the relationships with property owners, identifying parcels with the consultants and the teams here. Sharing our common expertise and experiences, I think can lead to some real opportunities. It's about having relationships and conversations with those property owners, with with potential uh butters. Developers, the development community, not only here in Bellingham, but also in the region. And um it has a long lasting impact and I think it's um some of the most rewarding parts of the work that I've done in the past. Is that having that ability to to deliver, you know, from concept to completion. Um whether it's a again, a senior housing project, housing for first time home buyers or veterans housing. So I'm very comfortable, I'm very familiar and eager and excited to to join you folks um in that initiative.
Bellingham will soon be constructing constructing a PFAS treatment plant with an estimated cost of thirty six million.
Yes.
What financing strategies would you explore to ease the financial impact?
Sure. So you folks have done some great work already, um and I I know you've. You've had the the congressman here too, very close communication with with your your federal delegation and and your state delegation as well. To try to unlock funding opportunities. I would continue those conversations and actually more recently too, by the way. Um I think it was um last, I think a week ago today, um the governor released her environmental bond bill. Uh environmental bond that allocates five hundred million for PFAS to assist. Communities like Bellingham, um address that. And so I'd be working closely with the 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 delegation, continue to work closely with them in that endeavor. Um seek opportunities for federal support as well and also um look at other communities, see what they're doing as well. Not only in in Massachusetts, but but throughout the um throughout the country also. I have to say and and kudos to the team here in Bellingham. Um I know the um the crew here doing some. Um they have an upcoming workshop about sort of that mechanics of your your success or how you're trying to address PFAS. And um and it's it's commendable and it's it's great and good work. And um you know, we need to look at best practices and see how other communities too are also trying to address this funding strategies long term. I don't have a immediate solution to that, but um I think it's a set of tools and strategies, um including those that I mentioned.
What experience do you have with working projects through the the TIPS Transportation Improvement Program? Do you have experience with the Mass Works Grant Program? What other grant programs have you worked on?
Sure, sure. So let me touch on the tip, Mass Works. And and other grants. So the tip process, which I I won't get into because I I don't remember it so well, but um. I did have the honor of of serving on the Boston MPO. And um the city of Everett at the time, um and still, I believe, has a seat at the table, uh one of a handful of communities. And um I was the mayor's designated for for a couple of years. Um until um we um we got a transportation planner on board and then I was able to to delegate and and give him that that experience. Um the tip process itself, um and the importance of getting projects, not just shovel ready, that's one thing, but plan development ready. Um is critically important in the in the tip and for those, I know you folks know, but. The um seeking federal and state funds through the tip program, very, very competitive and you really have need to have your projects teed up. Um the um overpass project on on four ninety five Maple Street. For example, other projects like that, getting those in the in the funding schedule critically important. Incremental progress, so using your your CIP, your capital improvement plan and. Starting off with the initial twenty five percent, fifty percent, seventy seventy five percent design. Year after year, making incremental progress, working with the team over at um MAPC, the staffers that. That work on the placement of these tip projects is critically important. And so I I have experienced not only being on, if you will, that side of the table, but also submitting projects into the tip um schedule. Working alongside, uh not all credit is certainly not all credit is mine, but working alongside our our DPW director in Oxford, who's. Who's doing great work. We have a couple of projects now, well, we have one project, I should say, our Main Street project that's in the tip program for the Worcester MPO. And uh once again, not to repeat myself, like getting projects as best you can ready for for design and shovel ready is critically important. Not just roadways, by the way, you know, tips also fund um. Trail projects and and other uh transportation is a critically important Mass Works. Um very comfortable and a lot of experience. Um certainly, I remember when Mass Works first came out. And I feel that just about almost every year, um try to go out and compete and apply. Um certainly you don't get funding every single year, um but been very successful through my office in 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 Everett and also. Uh in my role in roles in Oxford, we've been able to secure some Mass Works funding, particularly most notably recently for a sewer line extension project. Along Route twenty in Oxford, um allowing for, you know, we talked about new growth earlier. Allowing to help accelerate new growth in our industrial park. And um it's been a tremendous, tremendous asset having that funding in place. I want to say it was about two point two million. Um but it's the same fundamentals, getting the projects ready, through the design, um showing the need, justifying. And at the end, um it's a tremendous reward to be able to receive and secure that funding. Okay, other grants. Um well, other grants, um Mass Trails, for example, um is one that um I was able to secure for. The town of Oxford, five hundred thousand, which is the largest you can get and very grateful for that to advance design for. A large scale, you know, mimicking a very similar trail nearby, um for a large scale eight mile. Um rail trail project, um that would connect to the Midstate Trail and to the beautiful property of the of the Army Corps. And very proud to have secured that funding. Um we've advanced design and we've reapplied this year. Other grants um as well, um other state grants, um grants through through mass housing and D L T A funds through. Through M A P C, CMR PC, where I am out in the Worcester area, very comfortable, very familiar. And what happens in using these grants, these other opportunities to help us with FY twenty six. And twenty seven and twenty eight and so on, and we have to go out there and and apply and be competitive. And setting these programs up, so you folks um have been successful with green communities and perhaps MVP grants. Setting them up, what do I mean by that? Well, I talked about housing production plan, getting a plan like that in place opens you up to a new tier of grant funds. And why not? Why not go after that? Because other communities will. And I want to make sure whether it's in Oxford or here in Bellingham, that we're being competitive, that we're tapping into those opportunities. And it's not just the town administrator's office, but each and every department head. Also to be going out exploring those opportunities, you know, working alongside the fire chief and the police chief and their respective domains, seeking. Um state funds and federal funds also have had that that great opportunity. And it's not just grants also, it's earmarks I've talked about earlier with the PFAS a little bit. And again, very familiar, very comfortable and understand how critically important it is. It's also just not about receiving the grants, folks. It's also about closing out and ensuring that you achieve those goals that you set out for. Brownfields, okay, Brownfields funding, highly competitive. Um it fluctuates, you know, over the over certainly over my tenure, depending on, you know, the political whims in 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 DC. Um but most recently in Oxford, we were able to secure uh through our office, through my direction, Brownfields funding to um clean up an old. Abandoned site for new redevelopment, again, another opportunity for new road. Um they're not, these are not just one offs, you have to be very deliberate and strategic and then you marry that in with your, again, your capital plan. It's all part of a larger strategy to, you know, do more with less and um and do the very best you can to ensure that you're achieving your goals.
The town administrator negotiates five collective bargaining agreements. Tell us about your experience in this area as well as how you prepare for and engage in negotiations. What would your negotiating team look like?
Sure. So the um. Town manager's um office, it's it's a very busy office in in Oxford and I've had the opportunity, not just to to shadow, but also. To be a part of the the lead negotiating team. Um and um with respect, most recently, the um the firefighters' contract. And prior to that, just just so, just so you know, um that also. That was a department head for many years too, um not just in Oxford, but in in the city of Everett and we also. And as union employees and and working, union employees, we're we're all part of the same team, folks. And you know, the days of conflict and adversarial position, so on, I'm I'm about collaboration and that's. That's, I think, where we are at at modern day uh labor negotiation and so on. Okay, so going in, I really believe that it's about relationship building. And no different than any other scenario, any other situation. Um building the relationship with the police department, fire department, respected DPW and the other unions. By that, you you build trust and a couple of things, the negotiating team itself. Uh would include the HR director, your finance director, the assistant, uh town administrator. And um also town council as well. And from my bubble, uh my experience has been not only just reviewing proposals, but also working alongside. Need to say it, but working alongside the other side, right? We're on the same team, um but looking at comparables. And looking at the language of our contracts, you know, oftentimes we get into this cycle, don't we, where. Uh contracts are renewed and we focus on certain sections, but as the years go by, as contracts go by. Maybe there's some old language that we may forget about or need to come back and clean up, taking a fresh look at each and every one. And trying to take that opportunity to to clean up some stuff. Um I think also very, not I think, but also very important in the conversations is. I talk about building with relationships, but really I'm also um really want to understand what the what the goals are. Um for for the respective parties on on the other side and collectively, how those goals fit in with our financial constraints. But how we can fit those in also with the long-term strategic plan of the community. And having, you know, again, being part of the leadership team and I described to you the group that. I have comfortably worked under, uh and I would envision a similar format as well. It's a collaborative approach and at the end of the day, again, it's ensuring that, you know, we're we're meeting the needs of public safety because they. Save lives, right? Um meeting the needs of our DPW and so on. To ensure that, you know, strong unions and strong workforce leads to a strong community. That's not rhetoric, that's that's fact, right? And so I appreciate that question and it's a it's an area that I am growing, but I'm also very comfortable with as well, so thank you.
How would a department head in a municipality you currently manage or previously managed describe your strengths? How would a department head in a municipality you currently manage or previously managed, describe your strengths as well as areas for growth?
So, I would like to, um, I'd like to think that I'm hardworking, honest. I, I try to be a, a role model as best I can. And areas for growth, candidly, I'm, I'm open about it too. Um, when there's things that I don't know or areas that I, maybe it's in HR or certainly, you know, I'm not a finance director by no means, but. Um, I, you know, I can build an Excel sheet, but I'm better at putting the numbers in and tying them to goals and so. Um, but uh, in those areas, you know, I go out and, and learn and professional development. I think you'll hear department heads talk about that too, um, how I, I myself am motivated to, uh, to. Excel professionally, learn about best practices. Um, not just, you know, old, old practices and, you know, we've always done it this way, but going out to learn, see how other communities have, have done it. Frankly, that's what I've been talking about, uh, early on, having these different lenses in the various communities I've had the honor in serving in the past. Um, I think that's the, some of the stuff that, um, that department heads and, and really staff. Um, that, you know, the, the, the joy and the blessing of being in a town like, like Oxford and. I believe here in Bellingham too, is you can have these sort of one-on-one relationships. And it's not a, a big city, you know, it's, you're not going to get lost, right? Um, and it gives you that opportunity to, uh, to have a lot of impact. Um, so, yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
How do you remain apolitical in a political environment?
So fundamentally, you, you know, I, I, I have my masters in, in public administration and. How do I remain apolitical? Um, it's, it's all about being neutral, not, not taking sides, being focused on the facts. And giving you those facts so you can make the, the decisions. And when you make those decisions, it's my job to, to implement, to execute on it, right? And by using sound judgment and using good data, whatever is available. And again, focusing on facts, um, that's what helps me, that's what grounds me. Um, jokingly, I said this before, so, um, I leave politics to the professionals. That's not, that's not who I am. Um, I, I'm by, by nature, I'm a manager, I'm a planner, I'm an administrator. I enjoy it very much and I love what I do each and every day. The politics, it's important, right? It's fundamentally, it's listening to your constituents and ensuring that. You know, that the measures and the actions are taking place, that we're being responsive. I, I don't want to dismiss that at all. And again, to being neutral, um, and being a trusted advisor. To you is my goal and it's what I'm here to do each and every day.
How will you keep the select board informed?
Sure. So with respect to, to communications. I believe that's the, uh, I'll, I'll take that, that angle. Um, so each of you have your, your styles, your, your preferences. And um, it's not your job to figure out how I am to communicate, it's my job to figure out where, how, where I need to meet you at, if you will. And working alongside, you know, Jen Callahan in, in, in Oxford. Um, and within my own operations in the, in the past too, um, it's a, it's a mixed, it's a mixed approach. Um, some of you may want to be contacted every single step of the way and that's okay. Others, maybe not as much. All techniques with a call, email, text, yes, of course, um, but it's um. I would meet with each of you individually and ask you what, what your preference, preferences are. And when I am communicating, it's the same message to, to all. And distributed evenly. And I think that's the best way to go, best way to talk.
What have you learned about Bellingham that concerns you and why? How will you approach addressing your concern?
Yeah. So, concerns. Honestly, I, I see, I see things as, as opportunities and I started off in the beginning here talking about. The different challenges that, you know, your community is grappling with, though it's similar, if you will. Um, to, to other communities that finding that balance, right? Finding that balance between keeping your identity, promoting new growth, but also. Ensuring that there's, that you maintain a great and enhanced quality of life here, here in town. Um, it's goes back to the fundamentals to ensure that all of our actions, um, whether in paper, uh, in practice. Are, are sound, that we're doing periodic re- reviews of, of um. Of the bylaws and the rules and regulations, ensure that we're, we're implementing those, ensure there are safeguards in place. Um, challenges for new growth are real, um, so from an economic development piece, I, you know, I would be looking at and. You're rereading your, um, your economic development strategy from, from several years back and looking to see how that. How that fits and, and where, is that where you folks want to be, um, in the next five, ten years? Um, it's, you know, picking up your, your housing production plan, meeting with your staff and other stakeholders and. And the chairs of those respected boards, paying board and so on to understand kind of what, um, what they're, what they're learning, what their understandings are. And um, you know, you're grappling with challenges identified right in the beginning. Um, and um, with financial constraints, yes, of course, it's difficult, but it's no different than any other. Community. I see it as opportunities to, how do we figure it out? How do we take our goals, our objectives, our capital plan, whatnot, and how do we implement? And I've been fortunate to be able to do that by seeking out, again, you know, different opportunities for grants and um. And also, didn't talk about this, but cross-training, different departments to help save and so on. Um, it's a multi-pronged approach. And um, and I, you know, I, I look forward, cause I also understand that challenges today, challenges tomorrow, five, ten years. Maybe same, maybe different, but the same mechanics, open eye, open mind. Um, it's the same approach in my mind. And um, keeping a steady eye on fuel on the ball and the goals of, of this board.
Describe your skills and abilities in community relations. Give examples and discuss how, how community relations impact your work.
So, community relations, I'd like to share an example. This case, it was in the, in the city of um, of Everett and. I will talk through it, it's been some time, but um, I'll describe the area of some of you may, may not know, it's perfectly fine. Um, but there was a, one of the utility companies was uh, looking to um, put in a new line. Uh, which ultimately be a roadway project down on Beecham Street. It's called Island End, it's called Island End for a reason. It's um, it's a large industrial area, designated court area as well. And uh, they have everything down there, um, the New England Produce Terminal. All type billion dollar um, enterprise there, uh, LNG facility. And a whole bunch of other food and produce terminals to complement, um, the, the larger produce terminal. But what I'm getting at is, there's this major project, um, coming along the way of Beecham Street. Um, and utility company had to come in and do a bunch of work overnight. Um, overnight work is kind of, as I understand, is a, is a thing, right? With roadway, roadway projects. And um, after an initial process, um, that the utility company was required to have. With outreach, well, somewhat limited in my humble opinion. It uh, came front and center that in order for this project to be successful, it had to be more communication. Simply shutting down Beecham Street and going through a detour through residential neighborhoods and our respected adjacent community. Wasn't going to work. And myself, working with the, the local chamber. Through, again, um, as the director of planning and, uh, in Everett, uh, we set a, a series of meetings. Over at District Gas, which is the, the LNG facility and got all of the various um, uh, employers in the room. With a presentation from the utility company. And I didn't have any answers. But had the ability certainly to, to bring the folks together, try to ask good questions, solicit input and feedback. Critically important to get that roadway project done. Everyone recognized that, lots of logistics that the utility company may not have recognized or appreciated. And by having the folks in the room like this, and again, it's over at the two or three meetings. Could coordinate schedules. So this produce terminal I talked about, spent a great time talking about and these other facilities as well, their. Their prime time is two AM, two AM to, to four, sometimes five. They need to be in and out of there, right? They gotta go to Market Basket and, and stop and shop wherever else they need to be in, in the greater Boston area, you know, out in New England, in, in the region. And so it's not, it's not gonna work, right? There's mobilization, there's staging issues. And to do a complete shutdown, again, not gonna work. Meeting with a project team, getting them in the room, able to develop a schedule plan. That could accommodate all of the competing needs and interests. And to me, that was a prime example, what spun off of that too. And it was after my, my departure, but you've created this, this group now. Um, and a very cordial, very professional group, a team that also was able to mobilize and year, a couple of years later. Work towards developing plans to address flooding. Um, and imagine the detrimental impacts flooding would have in, in industrial area, especially one of that nature of critical regional importance. Um, so I did see benefit of. Meeting and addressing that immediate need over on Beecham Street. Uh, long-term, there's also a benefit that spun off of that to, to getting that team together to work towards, you know, they were in process of. Of applying for various grants and so on, to try to mitigate the next challenge there, uh, which was, which was flooding risks. The um, but the community engagement process, um, is something that. I've done many, many times in, in all facets and, and, and in all areas. And there are different, you know, techniques and, and approaches to that. And so I've been very fortunate, um, community relations, again, meeting with the stakeholders. Boils down to, you know, the first ninety days, um, it's getting out there and it's meeting with all of the different groups as, as many as I can and continue to. It's about listening and learning and being transparent. And whenever we have information. Whenever we're going through, again, budget process, major project and so on, um, going above and beyond. Oversharing is okay, it's good, it's healthy. And uh, and that's, that's what I've done, that's what I support doing. Thank you.
Tell us about, uh, can you, can you, tell us about community events you have led or been a part of? What was your role on the day of the event?
In terms of events, um, uh. Any liberty as to, or any specific, um, I've been involving a bunch of different types. I, I love that, I love that. Um. Cause um, we've done. Oh, thank you. We've done a bunch of outreach, um, so. Using um, tagging along into community events, for example, um, farmers markets, um, are, um. You know, I'm thinking in the, in the town of Oxford in particular, uh, movie nights and so on, that is spearheaded by, by, um, by our, um. Uh, community center director, right? But um, playing a supportive role. And assisting with all of the other logistics behind the scene. So one of the things that, you know, I'm MCPPO certified in public procurement and so on. Ensuring that, yes, all of those entertainment contracts and the procurement of those vendors, all that good stuff is in place. Um, maybe that's the boring stuff, that's not the fun stuff. Um, but, um, but ensuring that, that those are, are in place. With respect to, um, you know, talking about having a presence at community events, uh, two things here. Whenever we have a, um, an outreach project, so again, you know, let's say it's doing. Uh, gaining your economic development strategy or the, again, housing production plan or whatever it may be. Um, having a booth, uh, presence at those events to solicit, to solicit community input. Um, using those opportunities as, as um. As um, yeah, as opportunities to, to gather input from, from community critically important in that front. And um, you know, other events have been a, a part of. Working um, in different vendor fairs and I'm reminded of, I don't know if they still do it, but. Part of the original team of um, Village Fest in the, in the city of, of Everett. And um, that is over down by the Teddy's Peanut Butter Headquarters and this place called Night Shift Brewery. And working with the talented team over at the Encore, um, to put together, and this was, this was the mayor's vision, the mayor's priority. Um, and embarking on community development and other departments. To, to get and to engage those business owners, those property owners, working through logistics, you know, where you set a stage. And um, and hours of operation allow for outdoor, before COVID, allow for outdoor dining and so on. Um, so I've, I've had, um, a whole variety of experiences in there. Um, I wish I had one solid one where I could go in tremendous detail, but it's been, it's been a whole variety. I enjoy them, enjoy them very, very much. And I shouldn't forget too, um. Also fundamentals, being present at those events, right? So it's not just working behind the scenes, Monday through Friday, ensuring, but, but being there. And that's something that I, I trust you folks value. Um, it's something that's important to me as well. So being present, uh, doesn't necessarily mean, you know, being on stage. Um, but just, you know, being in the crowd, um, being with the citizens and so on. That's really, really important. I don't want to lose sight of that.
All right, please take a moment to offer any closing remarks.
I went by quickly. Goodness. I am, again, as, as I started, I'm, I'm really, really honored to be here. And um, you know, when the, this opportunity presented itself. Um, I, I had a chance to, to meet, um, the town administrator and. You know, I remember when I started in, uh, in Woburn, um. Right beside me, a, a dear mutual friend, um, Paula Stewart, who has since passed, but. Trevor Community Opportunities Group and, and the team that does, well, your housing rehab and stuff. She was talking up, um, Bellingham at, at that time. And um. You know, as a kid, I used to work retail and, and rent them. So I know if I got to Bellingham, I was, I got a little too far. This is before GPS and so on, but no, she was talking in, uh, in Woburn thereafter, years after, she was talking about Bellingham, how great the community is and. And so on. And um, it, it kind of, you know, it's stuck in the back of my mind. And um, then, you know, life takes over and, you know, family and so on. Um, when I made my way out to, to Oxford. And having had the opportunity to serve under town manager Callahan to, to grow and, and learn and to really practice. A whole other aspect of, of, of an area that I'm very passionate about and that's, that is management, that is administration. Um, this, when this opportunity presented itself, and I took a look at the, the good work you folks have done. Um, I'm very enthusiastic about this opportunity. Um, and I would be really, really honored to, to be here to work alongside you. Um, and you know, my goals, uh, my goal fundamentally is to ensure that your goals, um, are met. And um, not to be repetitive, but again, really honored to be here, to have this opportunity with you all. I thank you.
You, thank you again.
Thank you very much.
On the airport. You want, you want the water? Nobody drank it.
I'll take it with me, just to, just to. Thank you all. Have a great night. Have a good night. Take care.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn? You now adjourn.